It's recording.
Okay, we're going to call this meeting order. Is Joel Lozier of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof? Go ahead, Joe. Counselor Dewey?
Section 12, Agenda Number 12.
Hey, thank you. Any more? Okay, we want to apologize for the delay. We had some technical difficulties. We got it all straightened out and running now, so we're good to go. Item three, approval or amendments of meeting agenda. Be it resolved that council approves the agenda of a regular meeting dated April 27, 2021. Mover in a second, or please? Matt and Bill? Discussion? No discussion, no amendments? All in favor? Thank you very much. Item four, approval of minutes. Be it resolved that council approve the following minutes as presented. Regular council meeting dated April 6, 2021. Mover in a second, or please? Doug and Pat? Were any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? Harry, thank you very much. Is there any business arising from the minutes? None? Inquiries at the general public? We have none. Allegations and presentations? We have none. Businesses arising from the delegation presentations? Also none. Staffing committee reports? Correspondence for council's directions? 10.1, a resolution to amend Schedule A, a bylaw to a bylaw 2017-47 between the Corporation of the Town of Cobalt and Davis Property, Inc., to manage the property services for the Fraser Building. Draft motion be it resolved that bylaw 2017-047 be amended to commence a new three-year term with an adjustment of 8% for cleaning services. Comments, conversation, or discussion? Go ahead, Matthew.
Thank you, worship through you. I'm inquiring as to the management services themselves. Is that for the entire building because? Or is it, you know, split in half as per the COTM side and the municipal side?
We do, we do the, our side, COTM do their own site. We're not responsible for their cleaning or management.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions, comments? All in favor? Carrie, thank you very much. A resolution to amend the Schedule A to the user's fee bylaw to allow for the, an administrative charge. Draft motion to be resolved that Schedule C to bylaw 2020-50 is hereby amended to include the following statements of fee under administrative rates, unpaid charges added to the tax roll for collection $25. Mover in a second, or please? Pat? And Doug? Discussion? Go ahead, Bill.
Bill's on mute.
Yes, can, can somebody explain to me what this means? Unpaid charges added to the tax roll for collection of $25?
One second, John can clarify that. Can anybody, can you hear him?
Can't hear him, your worship.
Are we okay now?
I can't hear John. He's on mute.
Nope.
Perhaps if we put a hold on a moment, have John sign off and sign back in?
Okay, we're going to try that full volume here. Okay, we're going to take a break here for a second, so John can sign out, sign back in, see if we can get the sound to work. Hello, John? You still there?
Yes. I resent him an invitation as well. And I believe he's calling me. He hung up. Excuse me for a moment, I'll see if I can call him by phone.
He doesn't have his phone with him, John.
Someone, someone does with him.
Dale has just called you.
He's on. Can you hear us, John? There it is.
Can you hear him now?
I heard a couple seconds of him.
Nobody's hearing John at all, eh?
Perhaps he can unplug his headset. Can you speak now? No, he's got issues with his computer. Do you guys want me to?
We got a headset coming there.
Okay.
Is there a cellphone in the room that he can just tie into the audio with?
We'll try to set a headphones.
I feel bad for asking the question.
Can anyone hear him at all?
Nothing.
I'll send him phone-in information.
Okay, give us a second here.
If it hadn't have been you, Bill, that asked, it was going to be me, so it would have been one of us.
George, maybe you can give a five-minute break for everyone, and it might be a bathroom break while we sort this out.
Okay, we'll take a little pause for a cause, and we'll get this back going in a second, okay?
Please keep in mind that it's still showing that we are recording.
Yes.
Test, test?
Yes.
Are you okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, everybody come back and we can continue.
Can I proceed?
We're waiting for Angela.
Sorry about that. We had a faulty little connection on the USB port. The our user fee bylaws, you know, was passed a couple of months ago. This is one charge that we didn't have in it that should be in it, and we've noticed that there are a number of items where we transfer account between modules in our, when we have to transfers for old standing water, let's say, or any kind of outstanding charges that are applied to your property taxes, because it takes probably anywhere from half an hour to 40 minutes work between two different people that we felt that was fair to have an administrative charge of $25 added to that process. That in a typical fashion of, of user charges for administration purposes.
Does that clear it up for you people? Okay, any more discussion? Okay, can, all in favor?
I'd like a recorded vote.
Recorded vote, sure. Angela?
Four.
Pat? Four?
Four.
Bill?
Four, your worship.
Joe?
Four.
Doug?
Four.
Matthew?
Four.
Myself, four. Thank you very much. Okay, item 10.3, Ministry of Environment 2021 Annual Report, Cobalt Drink and Water System. We have a lengthy attachment attached to your packages. It describes the whole gamut from start to the finish. There's a it's a pretty lengthy report, so we're not going to bother reading it all right now. There any, can, okay, sorry. Be it resolved that council accept, oh no, sorry, that comes at the end. Is there any questions or comments on the drinking water?
Yes, your worship, I have a question.
Go ahead.
First of all, I can't see my image on the thing here. I don't know what happened, but I went through the report a bit. And what, what concerns me is the, the non-compliance. And one in particular, this would starts on page 24, one in particular is a repeat a repeat offense, the way she words it. This is a repeat violation would be number five. And I'm just wondering, now, on her actions required, are those actual orders? And is she following up with, you know, if it's a, if it's a repeat violation, she could potentially charge us. So it kind of concerns me. I don't know what the rest think, but this one part of the report that I read, that, that is concerning to me, perhaps maybe John could fill me in on what they mean by actions. Is it, is it an actual order written, or is it a requirement order issued by the inspector?
There are a number of areas in the report that required attention, so when, prior, when it was at draft stage, we met and went over it with Aqua and the fellows that do the water and sewer. 99% of the issues relate directly to when we were doing the transfer and upgrade of the water plant. To my knowledge, I'm quite sure all of the requirements, everything that she has asked for has been completed. She'd asked for a couple of little reports on, on some matters. We had issues where there were air bubbles in the system as we were transferring over and upgrading and commissioning. So pretty close to all of that issues went through that typical or, or through that timetable, and there is not an outstanding order at this time at all.
Okay, thank you, John, for the update.
Okay, Bill, you're not showing up on the screen here, so if you do have a question, just, just may say you've got a question.
Okay.
Any other questions on the water annual report? Okay, 10.4, consideration to update the official plan review proposal by James Diamond Municipal Planning Consultant. Also, there's an attachment along with that. Is there any? Any discussion on that? Go ahead, Angela.
Um, it's actually a really good report. It's very detailed. I think it's something we definitely need to look into. However, that being said, I would like to defer any decision on this until after we do the operating budget.
Do you want to answer that question, John, please?
Double mute issue here, but regardless, this matter is being brought to your attention now at the, at the council level and is going to be discussed at the budget level. Certainly, it's coming to budget.
Okay, be it resolved that council accept correspondence items as presented. Item 10.4 to be referred to a budget process for consideration. Mover in a second, or please? Doug and Matt? Any more discussion on these two items? All in favor? Thank you very much. An updated bylaw to provide for maintaining land in clean and clear condition. Be it resolved that bylaw number 2021-0212 be in a bylaw to provide for maintaining land in a clean and clear condition, be taken as read a first and second and third time, and finally passed the 27th day of April 2020. And further that bylaw 2011-29 be repealed. Have a mover in a second, or please? Doug and Joe? Is there any discussion or comments on the bylaw? Go ahead, Angela.
Um, first, I'd like to say good work on it. I'm sure it wasn't easy, especially when we sent it back. I do have one concern about the hobby vehicles, something that I hadn't thought of at the time when we were discussing this last meeting. Um, while they're contained or screened from view from the street or their neighboring residences. Um, I don't see anything in there to safeguard against the leaking of any fluids on the ground, which can cause an environmental issue that can be quite costly to clean up. I.e. oil leaks. Is that something we might want to consider putting in there as a requirement?
I'll let John respond to that one.
I don't believe the, what you're asking is tied directly to the hobby cars, but I believe it is in the bylaw where you are not allowed to have grease or oil or those items onto the ground on your property.
Go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, if you look under, under definition of refuge, I think it captures it there.
Yes, it does, I believe so, too. Any more discussion? All in favor of accepting the bylaw? Carried, thank you. 11.2 An updated bylaw to regulate and establish procedures for open air burning. Be it resolved that bylaw 2021-15 be in a bylaw to regulate and establish procedure for open air burning. Be taken as read a first, second, and a third time, and finally passed this 27th day of April 2021. And further that bylaw 2001-20 be repealed. Mover in a second, or please? Doug and Pat? Discussion on the item? A discussion, all in favor? Thank you. 11:03. An updated bylaw to prohibit and regulate certain noise within the Town of Cobalt. Be it resolved that bylaw 2021-16 be in a bylaw to prohibit and regulate certain noises within the Town of Cobalt be taken as read a first, second, and third time, and finally passed this 27th day of April 2021. And further that bylaw 1984-019 be repealed. Mover in a second, or please? Matthew and Joe? Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Okay, general business. Schedule of accounts. Be it resolved that council receive the following schedules as presented. Schedule number 2021 dash six in the amount of $139,768.67. Schedule number 2021-07 in the amount of $167,541.89. Mover in a second, or please? Bill? And Matt? Discussion, comments, concerns? None, all in favor? Okay, where is, Joe's disappeared on that one, okay? Motion for item 13? Motion for which prior notice has been given? We have none. 14, mayor's report, we have none. 15 is a notice of motion, 15.1. Counselor Bill Gabani would like to have staff prepare a report for the next council meeting on the option of reducing the number of councils, council members from six to four for the next term of council. 15-2 scheduling of council meetings to review and adopt a budget for the 2020 fiscal year in the first week of May 2020. Okay, that will come to the next meeting. Counselor updates.
So there are two separate items there. The, the notice of motion is, is fairly straightforward. Report will come forward at the next council meeting for council to debate the merits of this action. The next one is, we have to schedule a, an operating budget, which brings in the capital budget. And it looks like it'll be by Zoom for sure, which is a little bit more difficult to try to handle, but we're going to do our best of, hopefully it goes a lot better than tonight. And my suggestion is that it happened obviously sooner or later, and I'm suggesting Tuesday of next week, if we could do that. And, and just seeking your input on the date, the time, and how you would like to handle the meeting. But my my thoughts are that we will have a budget file and recommendations to you folks within two days, so that there's plenty of time to go over the, the, all the aspects of the budget fairly, fairly good budget, I think, for this coming year. fairly good budget, I think, for this coming year. Uh, and then we will go through it in this regular Zoom fashion with, uh, making our best efforts to show you the tables and the spreadsheets, uh, with, with everything. So I'm looking for a, a, a date and a time. Hoping next Tuesday.
Go ahead, Pat. Go ahead.
Next, the next couple of weeks, uh, I will be going out and I have to go late afternoons and early and into the evenings for, uh, doing the census job. And as yet, even though we're starting very shortly, I have had no schedule. So I can't guarantee I'll be there. Um, go ahead with the rest anyway, if we need to, and I'll take a look through the file that you send in and hand in any comments.
Okay, go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, I'm good for next Tuesday, not a problem. Uh, I know that we, there's some things that have to get moving and, uh, yes, as soon as we can get it going, let's do it. So I'm good for Tuesday.
Okay, everybody else, uh, on track for that? Okay, sounds good. Thanks, Doug. Counselor updates. Counselor Pat Anderson would like to speak on the headframes.
I got an email from Maggie Wilson, the Chair of the Historical Society, just to update you on what's going on over there. And, um, as far as the O N R closures on the two sites, was a door that was opened at the right of way and, uh, O N R was, uh, was, uh, told about it and they got it sealed shut right away. So, uh, she said, we appreciate the O N R's immediate response. She's also let them know that visitors continue to use the town site property, so the signage there is not effective. E N D M are unable to meet their targeted deadline of posting a request for bids for the assessment work. So the tentative date is May twelfth, nearly two months after the barriers were, uh, erected and no, you know, it's hard to say how long that's going to take before it even starts. So that's, um, that's moving into our, um, tourism season, unfortunately. And the O N R Board of Directors met April twenty-six to discuss the letter sent from the town in support of the C H S, but no answer back on that. And a bit of good news, T V O is starting, uh, filming a new series this summer. Alibi Entertainment from Toronto is producing a series for T V O about cities and towns that have experienced boom and bust and boom again. And Cobalt will be the first filming. So they will be here in July and August. And they are also aware of the O N R development. So I'm sure that will be a part of it. So that's a real good positive for us. Thank you.
Good. Thank you very much, Ben. Uh, hopefully they can move a little quicker than May the twelfth. Even though, uh, unfortunately with COVID, I don't know about the tourist season this year, so it's gonna be a wait and see what happens. Go ahead, Doug. Doug, did you want to say something? You're muted.
Not anymore, I don't think. Okay. With respect to our library, uh, some good notes out recently. They have received grants, three thousand dollars for a Maker Space computer and seven hundred and fifty-ish for a button maker for the Maker Space, which is kind of neat. I believe that's just making a space to put in the, uh, the three D printer that they have. So that's getting embellished. And especially interesting, exciting for me anyway, uh, seventeen thousand roughly grant for four summer students. So good news. In an otherwise kind of a COVID downer. But there we go.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. One else have a, God? Okay, thank you very much. Council questions and answers, not being done, closed session being done, business arising from a closed session, we'd have none. Confirmation bylaw. Be resolved that bylaw number twenty twenty-one dash seventeen being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council, the corporation of the town of Cobalt be taken as read a first, a second, and a third, and finally passed this twenty-seventh day of April twenty twenty-one and further that the said bylaw be signed by the mayor and the clerk and recorded in the bylaw book. Mover in a seconder, please. Pat and Joe? All in favor? Thank you. Okay, item twenty-one. Be it resolved that the right, uh, that committee of the whole meeting of council be adjourned at seven fourteen. All in favor? Oh, sorry, mover in a seconder. Matt and Joe, all in favor, of course. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, it was a trying night tonight, unfortunately. But, uh, I think we're getting better in the long run.
Thank you, uh, your worship, and thank you, John.
Thank you all, and we'll get the bugs out. Don't worry.